Okay, good evening. We're gonna call the school committee meeting to order on June fourth, two thousand eighteen. It is seven eleven because we started our meeting with the select board to request an appointment to our school committee and we're happy to say that Deanne Payne Markowski will be our fifth member for the upcoming year until the election, which is May twenty first, I believe, or one of those days.
May twenty nineteen.
Twenty, May twenty?
May twentieth, twenty nineteen is what they said.
Okay, thank you Jen. Um, we have a fairly quick agenda. Uh, well, do we have any visitors who would like to speak? Okay. Um, do we have any minutes to approve this time? No, okay.
No. No, not this time.
Alright, so we'll jump straight into new business. The first item is AP Physics Partnership.
So new business, um, we were hoping that we would have this finalized for you. That's why I had it on the agenda. Unfortunately, we're waiting for a little bit more information from both, but I did wanna let the committee know that we have been approved by Project Lead. That should be Lead the Way, sorry. And that is a STEM partnership grant that will allow us to do STEM engineering with grades six, seven, eight, and nine. And so we're excited about that and Steven's going to come and present on what that's going to entail. And the AP Physics Partnership, we are still waiting for confirmation, but that would be a partnership, I believe, with the University of Boston. I believe, and that is to bring AP Physics to our students through a partnership with them as well, so.
Is it virtual or?
It's a combination.
Combination.
Yep, so they're, they will send out kits and work with students, so it's exciting.
It is exciting, yeah. This is great.
Yeah, yep. So the agenda is gonna be quicker than, yes, but it, yes, so.
Next time? Alright, that's good. Okay. Um, so we're gonna, anything else on those?
Nope.
Okay.
No, we will be, uh, we will have all the information by June eighteenth meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, jumping to old business, the first item is wellness policy. Nancy Jenks?
Alright, do you want your banner for it?
Sure. Hold on, it'll take me there. So the wellness committee was going through a wellness policy and we decided to revamp it because there's so many issues.
Can you do us a favor? Can you come and join us, um, so that I don't know how well that microphone hears, yeah.
Sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. Sorry.
I'm assuming it's all good, but just in case.
So the, um, wellness committee decided to revamp a wellness policy to reflect the things that we're currently doing, that it was not in the old policy, as well as make some updates. So we looked at a couple of different templates from other school districts to see what they were encompassing of the different things that they were using that we were also using. So, um, we added a couple, we added six areas and modified the nutrition and the physical education areas. So we added in, uh, cultural proficiency, health education and skills, staff wellness, family, school, and community partnerships, health services, social emotional well-being, and health and safe, um, envi- healthy and safe environment. One of the areas under nutrition, we were having some concerns because, um, we're still dealing with food that's coming in from outside that sometimes is made from home and it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be store-bought with containers. So the, um, committee made a recommendation that staff go through chart wells and order things through chart wells since they are responsible for their school lunches and breakfasts and can kind of control what's coming in. This way, they're making a profit as well as ensuring the safety of what's being served to the kids, whether it's through parties or other events. That way, we're, you know, reducing the issues with the food allergies, the kids with celiac's are being addressed. Um, these kids with diabetes, their needs are getting met. Um, so that was one recommendation, um, from them. As well as, um, we provided a list in the back of the policy of non-food-related things that groups could do for fundraising and items to sell, things like that. Vanna's turning to it on the bottom. So different ideas, um, just of things to, to think of that's not food-related that could work well. And then items to do is on the next section as well. Kinda tried to think and got us out of the box. Obviously, these are ideas, staff can, staff and different organizations can think of other things, but, you know, really trying to, um, avoid using food as a reward or things like that unless it's written in an IP or special ed type of thing, um, so that we're making sure that everyone is included and not, you know, affected by that. Um, let's see here. The physical education, we just made sure that that was still meeting the guidelines. I did speak with the elementary and high school staff about what the current requirements are, so that's reflected in this right now. I'm not sure if that's gonna be adjusted in terms of curriculum and the requirements for graduation at this point. Um, I am not aware that there's any changes, um, but we're just a little bit more comprehensive in what that looks like right now, so parents are aware of what the kids are getting, um, in terms of physical education on page seven. And then, you know, the staff are encouraged to get first aid and CPR trained. I've been providing free classes with, um, to them. I'm an American Heart instructor, so making sure that we're providing that for them as well as collaborating with, um, Granby EMS. They're loaning us the DVDs, the mannequins, and all of that, and helping us get the cards. So that's included as well. Under the, um, health and safe environment, just making sure everything's up to code, the environment's safe for the kids to be learning, the team will evaluate if there's any issues, bringing that to, um, the attention. And then for the social emotional well-being, obviously, that's been a huge topic for the committee as well as what we're seeing in the school district and kind of making sure that that's in writing, that we're providing what the kids need and kind of thinking outside of the box, whether it's mindfulness or, um, making sure we're working with guidance, um, developing a buddy program for students, especially teaming up with staff that they find are supportive of them during the day or during the week, doing regular check-ins. And really making sure that we are helping reduce, um, the, the impact that sometimes comes from home and helping the kids learn better in a more supportive environment. We've included health services in terms of what nursing does and, um, as well as health education and life skills. Mr. Latoy is looking into adding a health education class through, um, kindergarten through grade six, kind of adding that in the specials rotation, so he's looking at that because we're finding that the kids need more health. So that's coming down the pike. We're also addressing cultural proficiency. I did, um, speak with Jamie Lewinsky in trying to identify things that needed to be in the policy to making sure that we are being culturally sensitive to all of our students. And making sure that we're providing opportunities for that in the building. We are also talking, um, talked about family and school and community partnerships, whether that's through the YMCA doing domestic violence training with the kids, um, grades eleven and twelve. We had Tapestry come in this year to speak with our kids about, um, sexual health education. Henry Gets Moving came in and spoke with the elementary school staff, uh, the elementary school kids about health and nutrition and physical activity, so making sure that we're including that into what we do. Um, and then staff wellness, making sure we're incorporating that, like the staff have opportunities to do yoga and do other things that, um, you know, help promote their health as well, because if we don't have healthy staff, we don't have healthy kids. They're less inclined to not be present in the school building. And then one of the big components is making sure that the committee is monitoring and evaluating how this is kicking off and providing the school committee with an annual report by June fifteenth. Obviously, this will shift for this year. Um, just letting you know the progress of the things that are happening and how we're ensuring that, um, the, the policy is being followed and what we're doing to support that during the school day. And then, um, we included a list of people who could potentially be members, um, when we meet at least four times a year, but it's obviously not limited to the individuals that could be in. And then, um, a big component is making sure that the staff review and sign the wellness policy because again, we're seeing some things that are happening in the schools that are indicating that they're not always aware of what the expectations are, so that if we're all on the same page, we all can make sure that the health and safety of the students in each other is still happening. And then making sure that the policy is on the school website for people to access as needed.
So, um, this has changed to our policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
We just consider our first reading then, or do you need a vote, kind of thing?
Um, it, it's, this is the, the team's final draft.
Okay.
So it's up to you and how you wanna take it from here. It would be great to have a vote and kind of see, or if you need more time to look over it and bring questions, I'm okay with that too. I just wanna make sure that we're all in agreement here and if there's any things that need to be adjusted, we can address that.
I personally quickly looked at it today, uh, and I did not go, uh, through it in a lot of detail.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one area that I really like and I'm wondering whether we can do a little more is the, uh, cultural.
Okay.
Um, what do we, what do they call that?
Proficiency. The cultural proficiency?
Yeah, proficiency side.
Okay.
Whether we can look at it from a, um, global competence perspective and maybe it, it fits multiple purposes, um.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that I did not really like what I read here, it's just I'm wondering whether, you know, since we are making the changes,
Okay.
there may be something a little more that we can add.
Right, okay.
And I had a question and this just popped in my head and you, um, kinda said something interesting that made me, uh, wonder. You mentioned that we would collaborate with, uh, chart wells for, you know, some of the food-related things because they're licensed and they can help us in that way. Is it possible for us to really, uh, collaborate in the opposite direction as well? That we are often hearing the food, the menu that we have is meeting our needs uh, and it's the only reason why we have so many things on our menu is because we're trying to fit the needs of so many students.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an opportunity for us to collaborate in that direction as well to understand whether or not, like, sometimes we are going overboard? And this is not really what you're trying to bring to us, but I'm also thinking about the budget side of things that, uh, you know, is it appropriate? Can it be, can it still serve the same purpose and provide a good meal to our students
Mm-hmm.
without really, you know, having a menu that is, uh, you know, pretty, pretty extensive, yeah.
Right. Extensive. We have, as a nursing department, spoke with Ken LaPage and we've had several meetings with him actually to address this because we were, um, since the transition and prior to that, having issues in terms of making sure that Nutrislice, the carbohydrate counts, especially for our students with diabetes, was lining up with what was being served. And part of the problem is, is there's so many vendors and so many different things being served and not everyone's doing the same thing that what was online is not lining up and some of the kids are being affected by it. And that was one thing that we've spoke with Ken about. He's been very receptive. Um, and he also brought it up without us saying anything is he's finding that there is too many things being served and to kind of condense it, um, because it's overwhelming and making sure that we're having the same vendors and that they're not changing things constantly because that's making it a hard, even on nursing's end, to, you know, know, okay, are they using three different type of vendors for hamburger rolls? And they could be off by five or ten grams. And for kids who are very sensitive, that's a huge thing. So he is aware of it. I know he's been working on it, um, but even at the high school, you know, there's been a lot of shifts with that and even at East Meadow, there's a lot of à la carte items. I mean, I've personally been in there and seen kids, they're eating, they're buying lunch, but they're loading up with snacks and then they're not really touching the, their majority of their lunch. They're chowing down on other things. So we wanna make sure that they're still getting the meat and potatoes, but I think especially when Wesco is over there, that's going to be overwhelming for the kids. So I do agree with you and we have been trying to address it, um, but Ken is still getting his feet wet, so, um,
Yeah.
I can, we can bring that up to him again.
Yeah, but it's, I, I, and thank you for that. And it could be a great collaboration, especially with, you know, you guys getting involved, the business manager now, uh, being part of the conversation
Mm-hmm.
and hearing Ken's willingness to work, uh, alongside you and others, so it may be a good, good thing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Yeah?
There's just a couple. It's probably not appropriate because this is a policy.
Okay.
But there's a little bit, I'd like to know a little bit more in detail on a couple of things too, like the phys ed.
Okay.
What it means monetarily, like, it looks like there's bare minimums that the states are making, making, that they recommend, but what it means monetarily and schedule-wise if we were to try to up that a little bit more. And then the same thing with, um, with the health services, um, especially, uh, you know, the teaching of the kids, at what age do we start, you know, talking about food choices?
Mm-hmm.
And the impacts of that too, because I think when you start, start teaching them at a young age, you know, fruit and vegetable is much better than a bag of chips.
Right.
Tends to go a lot longer in life and, you know, things like that.
Right.
I'll get a little more detail there. Maybe it's not appropriate to this, but as a supplement.
We are, um, I know that Bill Long Term is looking towards eventually hoping to bring Shonda on our elementary PE teacher full-time down the road. I know that's a discussion we've had. If, if we can do it in the budget down the road, I think he definitely is aiming for that. We're also talking about, like I said, bringing health in so that, um, all the kids are getting a health education class taught by one of the school nurses or by Shonda, whatever that's gonna look like, and it would be on a consistent basis. Because we are seeing those, those, um, deficits in the kids' learning. I know in the clinic I've been, you know, I made a game to kind of do hands-on in terms of at West Street where the kids have a, um, a poster of the Choose My Plate version and they have to put, okay, fruits, vegetables, like the plastic toys on there to try to get an idea of it, but, um, we are recognizing that's needed and we're trying, we're trying to figure out how to do that and get it started in September. So it's definitely on our list of stuff to do and, um, get it moving because we know they need it. We're seeing that and it's, um, having an impact on their ability to really understand and make those lifelong choices.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah, but before you get the habits.
Can I, can I speak up? Through the MTA, I applied for and have been granted a grant. It's a horticultural grant for a garden. Fruits and vegetables, hopefully one day, um, we can branch out, maybe plant a couple of fruit trees. But the idea is to eat what you grow. And it should involve every child who goes to East Meadow School. Right now, we're kind of stalled because of the construction and, um, a sensory type of herb garden will go in very soon in one of the courtyards. But, yeah, for twenty-five hundred dollars, and that will go a long way to getting us started with fruits, with vegetables and getting the kids growing the things that will be there and also being able to eat them. And I can apply, reapply every year for fifteen hundred dollars. So that's a good start towards your wellness policy and, um, I just wanted to make you aware of that, that we're working on something, I have been, because all of the grades somehow talk about plants and will grow seeds, at least at, um, West Street, things. Well, now they're gonna be doing it hands-on. And hopefully, we can buddy up some of the older kids with the younger kids and by getting their hands in there and planting things and watching it grow and having to take care of it, they'll eat better.
Right.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that we were getting them young enough to start instilling the good habits versus the bad habits.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. This would be like kindergarten, starting right off, um, all grades at the elementary level.
Okay.
That's the goal anyways.
It is also part of the new school building project and our lead credits that we have to actually have a component of our, um, new school, uh, work on creating space for growing our own food. And, you know, what the wellness policy establishes is a direction for curriculum to have, uh, a place in how we teach kids. So the policy is this is what we would like in place and then the curriculum will allow us to actually have the health teacher teaching units on making good choices about food or the PE teacher talking about, you know, good exercise. So that's where the two come together.
I'm just not sure we spent enough time in these spaces over the last number of years, that's all. Just wanna make sure that it's still.
No, and we, that's why we're try, we're trying to come up with innovative ways of addressing this so that that is, that needs getting met because we are, we are seeing the, the aftermath of that unfortunately, so.
Let's go back. Thank you.
And for, for the benefit of those folks who may have heard a voice but don't know what it is, that was Robin Lamorder.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Robin, for, for applying for the grant and getting it for us. Really appreciate it.
Um, the beauty of the grant is a paraprofessional and, um, educational support person is the one who has to apply for it. And this year it just happened to me, be me, and hopefully in future years it will be me also. And, um, the Massachusetts Teachers Association will, um, also give us as much support as we need for the, um, for the, this whole horticultural grant.
Cool, cool, that's great.
That's really great.
Any other questions from Nancy? So if you can give us time until our next meeting for us to go through and maybe come up with.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I haven't seen it yet, 'cause I haven't read my, I haven't accessed it yet.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. That would be great. That's not gonna delay anything that you wanna do, right?
Okay. Okay. No, I mean, my, ideally, I would like this to be able to start in August so that I can dress this with the staff when they return for the new school year and get them on board, make sure they understand the expectations or where we like to go from here and then hit the ground running.
Okay.
So.
So our next meeting in June, we can do that. We may not have two meetings in July, depending on what's coming up.
Right. Okay.
But in June, maybe next meeting we can, we can do that. Great.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Anything else for Jen? Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, keep on saying Jen. Uh, Nancy?
That's okay.
Yeah.
I have the, the Mind Up, uh, PowerPoint already open. It just needs to go to slideshow.
It's a busy day for Nancy.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
It's a busy day for Nancy.
That's okay. So we are hoping, um, to, we've looked at a couple different, uh, mindfulness curriculums and we're hoping down the road to initiate this. We did receive grant money through the Carlos Vega Fund to help support this curriculum, um, should the committee agree upon it to purchase the curriculum without any cost to the district. So Mind Up is created by the Han, uh, the, the Han Foundation. It's focusing on neuroscience, uh, social emotional education, mindfulness, and positive psychology. It's for grades kindergarten through eight and it builds on each other and it also works with the, um, integrates national, uh, naturally with the school curriculum and can be taught with any frameworks, um, across national levels with students. They're built in on fifteen lessons that can be broken down, um, either to a forty-five minute duration or fifteen-minute blocks, um, with one lesson lasting about two weeks. And then they're broken down into four units about getting the kids prepared in, um, slowly building up their ability to become more mindful, um, with themselves and others. So that Unit One's getting focused, Unit Two, sharpening your senses. On Unit Three, all about your attitude and Unit Four, taking action mindfully. And they're, the same language and methods are used across the curriculum, so, through grade levels. So it keeps the language continuing, so everyone's on the same page and reinforcing positive, um, behaviors with a more, um, mindful culture and environment. The lessons are all structured the same, so they introduce the topic. They talk about, um, at the child's age-appropriate level, the link to brain research and then setting up clarity for the class, helping them understand what's going on, getting ready for it, doing a Mind Up warm-up, going into the lesson and then building it into the curriculum. The, um, great thing about Mind Up is it integrates classroom management for ELL, special needs and general learners and it helps bring in real-world connections through careers and concrete applications. So it's not just something that they're not gonna be able to kind of learn how to bridge things to. The staff can apply this to any day salute, um, situations with students and staff to help the kids utilize the lessons that they're learning to address different things that might be going on. And the kids get to reflect through journal writing, um, with writing prompts, what they've noticed, what it means and what they've learned. And then they pull in a literature link to help staff use other resources to extend the learning, um, which is a really great tool. And then this link shows you, um, the topic this fifth-grade classroom is using about how their brain works.
I learned a lot about the brain. I like the brain. It's, it's a cool part of the body. It does so much, controls you. It's where basically you are.
Good morning, fifth grade.
Good morning, Mr. Swan.
You guys are worried about the brain today. We're gonna do Mind Up Lesson Number One. Usually when children think about their brain, you think about it as a gigantic pink mass that does it all. It's helpless. We have a dandy-dandy poster. They're getting to know and love your brain, yes?
Yes!
Which part of the brain would you like to learn about first? The prefrontal cortex, amygdala, or the hippocampus? The main goals for this lesson are really to talk about what the prefrontal cortex, the hippocampus, and amygdala do and how that influences their actions. The hippocampus, how are these crescent-like structures right over here? They are located a little bit behind your ears and in towards the inside toward the part of the brain, which I just pointed that real quick. The hippocampus usually creates and stores all the cortex memories. It helps you remember things that are important to you. What are some things that are important to you that you have to remember?
Your name?
Yes, your name. You guys are very, very tuned to your own name. What's something else that you really have to remember?
How to write, read, and stuff.
Yes, you guys remember kind of what language you speak, how to write, that would.
I always like for the kids to pronounce the words. For a literacy reason, I always believe that the word is not theirs until they learn how to pronounce it.
Let me get you guys to pronounce again.
The hippocampus.
Hmm.
The hippocampus!
As soon as they learn how to pronounce a word, then it's, it becomes like their property, like they can use it forever.
Amygdala, everybody, amygdala.
Amygdala!
The amygdala is about little almond-shaped sized parts of the brain, also located right behind your ears. Go ahead and do that for me again. Kind of like in more towards the inside part of the brain. You guys know anything about the amygdala already? Michael.
But if you react to things, if there's like a ghost coming and you get scared, your amygdala starts reacting.
Yeah, so if you were at home in your haunted house and a ghost appears, you would be like, it's time to.
Jump out the window!
When you talk about ghosts, it's probably talking about fear. Usually when people see ghosts, they're usually afraid of that. What else does the amygdala help you to do? Go on.
It's like fight, flight, and prey.
Do you wanna, yeah, we can stop it.
You're very close.
You wanna say, yeah.
You have fight, flight, and what's the fourth?
So as you can see, they're learning about the brain structures and how that interacts and then they start learning as they go along about, okay, if I can control these body parts and kind of understand what I'm doing and start doing these exercises so that my amygdala is not constantly in fight or flight, they're able to develop those skills of self-control, self-awareness, mindfulness of what they're doing, how they're interacting with themselves and others in their community. And eventually, it branches out to them thinking beyond just the school, but into the community itself and what that will look like. So I just wanted you to get a clip of what that kind of looks like.
Yeah. Do they all have, uh, science context?
Yes, yep, neuroscience.
So is this then connected with, could it be connected with STEM as well, or is it?
Yes, it, yeah, they're using your neuroscience.
Okay.
So they're learning developmentally and age-appropriately how their brain works and how that, um, impacts what they do. So it's kind of a good thing, 'cause like I said, it builds through the grades. They're learning more as they're going through it and kind of continuing that process so that they're all speaking the same language. They're all able to keep that going as they're going along. So, um, where are we? So implementing it in the classroom, they begin with a core practice, which is done three times a day for the older kids. So this is kind of like their mindfulness break. They, um, and it, the program gives them recommendations based off the age level. So that may be breathing and relaxation techniques. They're learning to do belly breathing. They're learning to breathe through their nose. They're learning to kind of just be aware of how their body is in space. It'd be done in small Um, can be done in small groups, can be done in large groups during circle time, during group meetings. Um, and it can bring in collaboration and discussion, so they're able to use it at any time throughout the day depending on what they're doing. And everyone's doing the same thing. Um, it's included in parenting, community involvement, so educating parents in the community about what we're doing. That would be starting in the fall workshops, forums, so that they can support what we're doing at home, making sure educational materials are going home. So families can start doing that um and helping their kids continue that process. Um, I'll give an example, like as I was going through this, my younger son struggles going down to sleep. And I started doing techniques with him where we would do the head-to-toe kind of relaxation and then I would do guided imagery where I would tell him, think of a favorite place that you wanna be at, what does it smell like? What are you doing? What's it with the light? Who's with you? What's the temperature? What are you wearing? And it helps settles him down. So if we're able to continue that into the classroom, it grounds the kids so that they're focused to continue what they're doing. Um, whether it's a transition from coming in from recess or lunch or a really active part of the class and then the time, the next part of the transition is to settle down. Um, so kind of doing that and br- bridging it in and then continuing that into looking beyond themselves and going into the community acts of kindness, expressing gratitude, taking action mindfully and really um being aware of what's going on. So this is a core practice schedule. As you can see, um grades, it wor- that's for um weeks one through three. You've got pre-K through grades two, three and five, how they have the three breaks. And then six through eight may have um two or three depending on what's going on and how their schedule is. And then you have on the bottom the alternative pullouts settings in ELL to kind of continue supporting these kiddos as they're going through everything. And as you can see, they had like breathe um breathe first and then making uh making sure that the core practices is happening. And then this is the sample um lesson plan implementation chart, how they can break everything down in the curriculum. Um, each uh grade level has their um like K through two has their own book that builds on each other, three through five and six through eight. Um, so that's kind of what it will look like if the teachers were to break it down into fifteen minute blocks or keep, you know, have a longer blocks, they can do that as well. And then continuing this on, one thing that we would like to do if we're able to do this program is stretch it out. So buddy program for our kids, so staff pairs up with a kid with a student. The student um loves connecting with the staff, so if this means they're doing regular check-ins in the mornings or you know, a couple times a week, you know, they can hi- high-five them, do thumbs up, eat lunch with them, really check in so that student knows there's someone at school who really um connects with them and hooks up with them. Um, that can be done on a student level with community service or junior, senior high school kids coming over and mentoring a younger kiddo. Um, reading to a student if they can, having lunch with them, checking in daily or a few times a week. Um, the peace club, we bought a a mat, a sixteen by twenty mat to create a walking labyrinth for kids and students to use during the day um to kind of help regroup. So we're um just started in the process of working on that. Um, and then doing community outreach, whether that's helping at the food pantry, doing a can drive, helping clean the park, um going beyond the school doors and out into the community to make sure that the kids are able to canary that carry that connection outward. And then this is our implementation guideline, if we can um implement it. Um, the staff would be introduced to the program before the school year ends. Um, we s- um they get access to the books in the curriculum and then provide a training for them in August during professional development. Um, we launch it in September when we start school. Um, we do community and parent engagement um in the fall and in the spring do check-ins with the staff and the kids, doing assessments, coaching, um making adjustments and then continuous support through um portals, webinars, weekly tips, coaching and then continuing on the process of evaluating what we can do and then continuing it and building in different pockets if we're noticing areas need more support. And then, you know, this is for mindfulness education, these are the things that they're seeing in evidence-based practice of the positive impact that it's having on the students. Um, they're able to be more attentive, their proficiency in executive ex- um executive executive functioning is higher, they're having higher academic achievement, they're able to be um, you know, more socially and emotionally competent, have better self-regulation. I saw this in a magazine, I thought it was kind of cute to add in here, um bringing the more awareness even to our pets. Um, as they um show us sometimes, it's not just the humans, they are also um showing us mindful lessons throughout the day. And then helping, you know, through this program, we can help build resilience, awareness and empowerment for all of our students every day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great. So we have, we have the.
We have the money to purchase the curriculum through the Carlos Vega grant.
Money. Okay.
Um, we were very lucky, they normally um they've been bridging out to other communities, so they've been trying to um do more.
I'm sorry, I have to go.
That's okay, social justice types of things and building resiliency is one of them, so we are very fortunate.
Thank you all for working on that. I know Deanne was part of that work. Uh, thank you all for putting this together. This is really exciting.
I love it, it sounds great.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. Um, for peace builders, is this kind of augmenting peace builder? It seems there's a little overlap.
Yes, there there. There is overlap, so this is building into peace builder, so.
Thank you, Jen.
Um, you know, making sure they're praising people, really taking ownership of what you're doing, if you're righting wrongs, building that awareness of what they're doing and being a peace builder not only in school, but out in the community at home and really they work really meshing well together.
Yeah, so I saw a little overlap, but it it seemed like it was a good compliment.
It is, yes, yes, definitely.
Okay. Thank you very much, Nancy. This is, this is awesome. If you like it, um.
You're welcome.
I did wanna just show, I don't know if people saw the um the link to.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't stopping peace builder.
Well, no, no, this is, this is gonna complement it and it complements it very well. We're bu- building on those lessons and really it's helping them encourage to carry on those um those areas that peace builder brings, so.
Okay.
Cause they say the same every day after the pledge and making sure that we're connecting those two together. They're hearing the words and now they get to act it out, you know, they get to engage them now.
Okay.
Whoops.
Here, a question.
Community Civil Rights Act. A thousand dollars in grants was awarded in Hoya this evening to honor the legacy of a community civil rights activist. The Carlos Vega Fund for Social Justice awarded twelve mini grants to Western Massachusetts organizations that fight injustice, oppression and poverty. Receivants included Brandy Public Schools, Morgan Elementary School and Hoya Public Library. Also recognized tonight and Lase de Familias Executive Director Betty Medina-Lichtenstein, who was awarded the Carlos Vegas Social Justice Award for her work in the community. This is the Carlos Vegas Fund's seventh year awarding grants.
And we can reapply for um another grant next year because they do have agencies that repl- apply every year for different projects. So if we decide we wanna bridge and do add on to this, we can reapply again. They normally do up to a thousand dollars, so.
Cool. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome. How do we, how do we communicate this to the community?
Send it off. I think it needs some, and our colleagues go and send it off.
Yeah.
Right, so when we um uh potentially when we do our professional development, uh we can begin uh reaching out to have uh news coverage. Um, but then as it goes throughout the year, uh we're finding that the news and media outlets like to have these sustaining stories. So when we work with students, with that learning with students and when we reach out to the community, so they will have follow-up stories all year long.
I know when I spoke with the town reminder um reporter on screenagers, I was talking to him also about our development of our mindful mindfulness, social, emotional curriculum and where we wanted to go. And he told me he wanted me to contact him when we decided to s- to um start kick this off. So he may be a way to continue this ongoing conversation and demonstrating what we're doing. Um, he was very, very interested.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should put it on our websites too.
I was, that's what, that's what I was asking about that, you know, we should put on the website, on Facebook page, um.
Yep, yep. Yep.
We could, we could do an all call to let parents know. Um, part of it is, is the curriculum approved.
Yeah.
Um, then we can, you know, move forward with all of the plans for implementation, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we need to approve the curriculum, Nancy. Okay, since we don't have our form anymore, yeah, so we cannot do it tonight.
Possibly.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I was trying to jump in. Um. But June eighteenth would be.
Okay.
We would, we would need a vote.
June nineteenth?
Yeah, that's our next meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
Plus, I think when we do the community outreach.
Oh, I'm sure.
What's up?
I said, I think when we start doing the community outreach, that also helps get the word out.
Mm-hmm, yes.
This is because of this this program, right?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
And with our connections with neighbors, helping neighbors in the Brandy to Go program, that's an outreach outlet that we can help bridge the outskirts of what we wanna do here because they are looking for volunteers, they're looking for us to help support their program. Cause right now, they're they're serving thirty-nine of our students. So um, you know, and there there there's no stigma with them. They help anybody regardless of financial situation. Um, so that's a way we could go that that we're already partnering with them.
Who's this again?
Um, neighbors helping neighbors who have penetrated, serve Brandy and assault that league.
Okay.
Can I ask a question here? Now, you're talking about making sure this information is in the faculty's hands over the summer.
Mm-hmm.
And um there will be some training.
Will you have more training?
Cause I, when you were presenting it, I wanted, I, in my mind, I thought, is this something the nurses, nursing staff are going to hit each grade level and teach? Or is this staffing responsibility now added to their day in their curriculum? I'm looking at it from the perspective of the teachers and, you know, another thing and how am I gonna fit this in?
Teachers, okay.
Will there be more training periodically through um the school year and checking in? And how is it, how are you fitting it in?
So we wanna do a combo kind of package. Right now with the health education, we're looking towards nursing, teaching that sixth day, that sixth day health education and then the staff carrying that over in the classroom. Um, the goal is this is will will occur naturally with their curriculum. So we would like to, I would like to introduce it to them if possible at the hour of power next week. So they're at least seeing what it's looking like and having an idea and going from there with this PowerPoint so they understand what's coming. And then in August, I would be doing a training during professional development and then scheduling, write their check-ins during the power of power, things like that. So we're all on the same page of what's happening and I can address issues and um whoever's teaching health can address issues as well.
And at, you know, at the elementary level, um having um morning meeting, this is a perfect opportunity and and staff do ask for what do I teach during morning meeting, how how do I get the ideas of building a culture in my classroom? Well, you do it through peace builders, you do it through mindfulness, um and these are the actual instructional pieces that teachers can use now during those morning meetings to have, you know, something in their toolbox to share and create these lessons with their students.
And the other thing too, if they're coming in from recess and they know these kids are really having a hard time downshifting, this is the time to integrate that second, second block of time into the day. And then at the end of the day before they wrap up, okay, let's, let's um, you know, recap and downshift a little bit so we can write our homework down, making sure we finished up what we need to for the day, getting ready for the bus. Kind of pulling it all together so that they're, they're ready to focus and end the day on a high note.
Okay. Um, I just wanna make sure that there is definitely support in place throughout the school year for the faculty because they are my concern.
Yes. Right, no, no, that's not.
Not, I mean, not that the children aren't, but.
Right, right, right. No, I understand, I understand. And we want them to be successful and that's our goal. So that's, that's on our agenda, so no worries.
I just don't wanna hear. Something else, how am I gonna fit this in? Okay, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So we can continue, but we can't.
Right, and so what I have remaining is um the Blizzard Bag survey, but I, I guess I would think we would want the majority of the committee here to, um.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yep.
Can you just tell us if it's good or bad?
Um.
Thought it was good.
Yeah, sure, in in general.
I mean, yeah, I don't need details, just yes or no.
I'd say here like seventy percent thought it should be continued.
Yep.
And seventeen point four said it should be continued with some revisions.
So if you look. Um, in general, so the one question is how do we think it went overall? Um, first of all, we had, and I'll go over this in more detail next time, but we had a hundred and nine responses and I can't thank the community enough. These were um uh just parents. It may be that a teacher had a pa- had a student in the school district, but we did not survey um staff because the union had done that already. So this just went to parents. Um, sixty-four point two percent said absolutely yes and then another sixteen point uh five percent strongly agreed in general that the e-learning Blizzard Bags um went well. And um seven point three percent and three point seven percent um strongly disagreeing was the seven point three and three point seven um disagreeing that they went well. So, you know, I I think it's important, we don't ask for surveys often, but when we do, um thank you so much to the families that responded. And especially with this survey, and I didn't include it here, I don't think I did. Um, the amount of actual um real feedback um in terms of typed feedback responses. Oh, I did. These are all of the responses that people gave us.
Wow, that's great.
So that's a tremendous amount of information for the leadership team and staff to go through to talk about what the impact was in families, um because often that's difficult to get. Um, and so we're very happy to uh have that information, go through that um as we're looking to um potentially with school committees um blessing uh either implement fully or or do another pilot year based on the initial read of the survey information, so.
And there, and there was only like three or four different themes within those comments.
Yes, yes, yep.
Kinda helps out.
Yep.
And a real data manager would help you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But we, we'll go through that in more detail the next time.
Do we know how to, how the data aligns with grades?
I did not pull it out. Okay, let me rephrase. Yes, but I did not present it through Google that way. Um, it would go into a um Excel spreadsheet and then we would have to um recalculate per school because it is listed by school or by grade, so you would pull those grades together and then think about.
Yeah.
Yep.
That will be, that will be good to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause if, you know, I was quickly looking at some of the comments, if some folks think that, oh, this was easy work and some others say it wasn't that easy, um it would be great to know whether that's difference.
Right.
Uh, from grade to grade, within the grade.
Yes.
What that means.
In general, we had more responses at the elementary level, um at the younger grades. So um, you know, to your point, it would be important to pull out um at the levels, um what the responses were like.
Yeah.
Po- plus, I was hoping that going into it next year, um there would be, I don't, I don't wanna use the phrase a better plan, but a different plan with some of the teachers and some of the schools. I think we kind of all agreed to do this kind of late in the game.
Yep.
And now the teachers have seen it, they kind of understand what's gonna be expected and would have a better plan for their, for their class to get it out there.
Mm-hmm. And I think there are some um comments regarding um parents not feeling like teachers were responsive in some cases and I think that our teachers will find that um that they were and so what was that disconnect? So that they can figure that out, so whether they share with their class that they're gonna be on at a certain time and that's, you know, when they're definitely available, but they will be checking over time. I think ironing out those kinds of issues, I think um can, we can ensure that the instruction and the learning is happening. I think ironing out those kinds of issues, I think, um, can, we can ensure that the instruction and the learning is happening when students are completing the work.
What was the overall, uh, teacher feedback?
The overall teacher feedback was similar, uh, very supportive, um, as we're moving to the end of the year, I'm getting a little bit of feedback that, um, oh my goodness, um, I need a little bit more time to finish my, my unit that I'm in, and so I think making an adjustment, uh, throughout the year to keep on pace with, uh, units.
Yeah.
Um, uh, but overall, it was positive.
Do, did we have a student version of this too?
Um.
I thought, I thought Annabelle was putting that together.
She did the sticky notes, and I, I haven't put that all together.
She did, oh, yeah. But it would be, it would have been nice to have a hundred and nine responses from the kids.
Yeah.
To see their perspective.
Yeah, I was relying on, uh, Robin's, uh, survey of the staff and then Annabelle's, but it's not too late to send out.
Yeah. Cause Annabelle's was the other way around, but, you know, that's not really, you know, it's basically, uh, surveying, uh, who was available and who wanted to speak up.
Uh, yeah. Right.
But as you remember, on the positive side, which, you know, I laughed about, it was no snow days, that was a positive, and everything was on the other couple.
Yeah, yeah.
So, given that she did not have an opportunity to speak to anybody in the elementary schools, I can assume that that was exclusively from the high school side? That's why I'm asking whether or not we can calibrate it to determine what the challenges were depending on the grade.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, and there was.
And as a senior too, her whole, her opinion about the, you know, the whole Blizzard Bag thing would have been different because, let's face seniors, the whole thing with snow days is, we don't have to make them up.
Yeah, well, that, that was, they were very honest about that, that, you know, we did not have to do this to begin with.
Yeah. Right.
But, uh, it, it seems like there was, they already had homework. I mean, they already have these higher level classes and they already had homework. And then on top of that, now they had to, you know, do additional work.
Days.
And one of the comments was interesting that even for classes where you normally don't have homework, because it has to count as, uh, you know, a, a day's work or a class's work, they had, they had homework for gym classes. So, there is, there seems to be some opportunity for calibration if we're gonna continue with this, um.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, I can understand that, because I saw some words here, and I, I can tell that, you know, for elementary school students especially, this could be interesting, because, hey, they can't just stay outside all day under the snow and, you know, make s- uh, snowmen, they just, you know, they have to do something. And it was saying, it was fun, they were able to do it at their own pace, uh, let's find out whether that applies, the same concept applies at higher grades as well.
And there was homework from the art teacher for the elementary, uh, that I do know.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I mean, draw your favorite, draw your shoe, favorite shoes, or put your pet, or, you know, something of their, their interest.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't have to, I didn't have to crack into that one with Isaac, cause his, his, the snow days never happened to be one of his art days, but I, I did see it in the, 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 you know, that pack, you know, the packet.
But at the same time, I will echo what you said, that it is, it is incredible that we had a hundred and nine responses to this.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and, uh, hopefully we can get responsive like this for other types of surveys as well.
So, I also did a, um, school culture climate survey, um, and we got a similar amount of responses. So, again, you know, when we send them out, we don't try to send out a lot, um, but we really appreciate the feedback. Um, it's part of our strategic plan, is that we act to make decisions about the work that we're doing, um, and that we understand multiple perceptions of, uh, the same issue, uh, or we s- we understand the issue from multiple perspectives, it's a better way to say it.
Yeah.
So that's important to us moving forward. So, I will probably share the, um, school culture climate surveys, um, probably on the eighteenth as well, cause I wanna leave those open a little bit longer.
That's, sounds good.
So, um, I guess, uh, the, let me just do the agenda here, um. I froze my computer somehow, um.
If you can just remind us.
I'd like to go over the budget deficit, just so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, we are very thankful for the opportunity to work with the finance committee, uh, continue working with the finance committee, um. As of April thirtieth, and, um, just before that was the public hearing, uh, we had a deficit between what the town parameter is for the school department and what our needs are as a school department, that, that deficit was two hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And in the interim from April thirtieth until we met last week with the finance committee, um, we had a few other changes. Um, one was, uh, resignation, um, in the special education department and working with Carol and the high school staff, um, deciding not to fill that position, uh, for the upcoming year. That doesn't mean that that would automatically be the case, because, um, we may have a different caseload in upcoming years. But for next year, uh, we do feel like we can handle that caseload, um, without filling that position. So we reduced our, our, um, budget need by the salary there, seventy thousand. Um, and then in working with Mr. Martin, Emery, uh, thank you for that, uh, moving the network infrastructure upgrades to a capital request. And that conversation has really taken off, um, and we are actually right now, um, by, uh, the middle of June, we will have a final bid, um, or quote, for the changes in our request. Uh, because the original request and approval for E-rate reimbursement was two years old, and we had applied for extensions. And with this, um, we have to make a few final changes, um, some of the equipment was outdated, and we're moving to a wireless infrastructure, and so trying to, uh, navigate that with our consultant. Um, but the net of that is that it would be a capital request, not a general operating budget request. And so what we're looking for, um, and I, we have support from three out of the four finance committee members at our meeting, um, our gap is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and so, Emery, I don't know if you wanna talk about how, um, that would move forward.
Yeah, well, two things, one, I, I wanna thank Chris for.
Yes.
Um, really informing us and giving us, um, guidance, uh, on what that capital request would and should look like as we go to the, uh, uh, capital improvement committee. So that allowed us to do something that we wanted to do, we've been talking about for a while, uh, because of the clarity he provided. Uh, take something that is capital related out of an operational, uh, budget. The other part of it, the remaining hundred eighty-five thousand, uh, uh, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, uh, with the finance committee's vote, it was decided that they would support taking that amount, uh, from the stabilization fund. And they will, uh, basically support that, uh, that, uh, at the town meeting, at the upcoming town meeting. Uh, so hopefully that, that, uh, for the first time in a long time, it just, uh, brings all of our, uh, uh, major committees together in the way we are supporting, in the way we worked on, we, uh, talked about, and then we agreed on, uh, what the, uh, reasonable gap would be, uh, doesn't mean that our work stops, um, probably we're gonna have a lot more work.
Mm-hmm.
As those of you who watch the, uh, uh, the meetings, remember, we have a new business manager who's coming in, and we're expecting that there will be a lot of opportunity for us to really, um, look at our budget, um, from a variety of perspectives, different perspectives, and see what, what we can, what we can do in the, uh, coming year and, and, uh, after that. And we are all keeping our fingers crossed for the fair share amendment, obviously, that will be voted on, uh, in November, uh, which will be critical, uh, for the state overall, to really get to a level to adequately fund education and transportation at the same time, but, uh, especially from our perspective, education and educational needs. But this is great news, uh, I also echo what you said with respect to the, uh, cooperation, collaboration with the, uh, finance committee. We appreciate, uh, the ideas, one thing that I am looking forward to, I think everybody said the same thing at that meeting. And I think folks who are interested, um, in looking at creative ways to generate funds or support what we care about, um, you would be interested as well, that we're starting a series of meetings, hopefully, uh, on the fourteenth of June with the finance committee and the select board, to look at every possible way of, uh, finding new ways to generate revenue for, uh, for the school district. Um, basically, it's, nothing is, nothing is too wild, too extreme type of conversation, because wanna make sure that everybody can be part of that conversation, and all ideas are heard, uh, which is the way it should be, but we're looking forward to it.
So that, starting on June, June fourteenth, it's gonna be the, the three committees, uh, getting together to try to look at what you, what, what you just said, right, uh?
That's my understanding, and that would be primarily focusing on ways to generate revenues for the school district. If it goes beyond that, I think then it has to go back to the select board for them to appoint an economic development type of, uh, committee, uh, to, to really focus on the, you know, on econo- to focus on economic development at a broader scale.
Cause that, that was my confusion, cause we wouldn't necessarily.
Yeah, no, this is primarily related to us.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
And then my other comment was, um, great, great job to have to go to the town with under two hundred thousand for the first time.
Yeah.
Since I've been in, in this town, and even if you added the extra, it's still under, um, four hundred thousand, usually it's high fives or mid fives.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Six hundred thousand range, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, so the total amount actually is less than what was voted at the town meeting alone last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, you didn't. So that's a lot of great work on it, how people put the budget together, and, and, and this is, this is with the statement that this keeps what we, what we did this year at the same, at the same pace, right?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and we're hoping that this is where we get to the point of stabilizing, and then we start looking, uh, upward.
Right.
You had a question?
It was, um, it was more an observation, it was nice as a resident to see the committees come together at town meeting and really support each other, it was a breath of fresh air, and I hope it can continue for a long time, it was wonderful, it really, really was.
Agreed. Yep, thank you for that, that, I completely agree, and that's what, that's what we said at the end of that meeting as well. We're not necessarily gonna agree on everything, and that's not the, that's not the point, that's not the purpose, everybody has a different perspective. But it is, when we, when we just look, put everything on the table and start looking at it, we will find out, and we did, uh, this time around, that there are many things we can agree on, and then we can continue the conversation on those, on, on those things that we don't agree on. So it was, I agree with you, and thank you for, for saying that. Um, that's about it, I guess, we can't really.
Yeah.
Have any more conversations, we had some, uh, updates, but we can wait until.
Oh, do you want the update?
I mean, your update is not dependent on any vote, or in fact, any one of these updates is not dependent on any vote?
Yeah. Yep.
I will have a CES, we had a meeting last week, and I just did not have a chance to really put it all in any kind of.
Okay, so you don't have an update today?
No, but I will, I will for the next one.
Okay. Alright. So West Street Building Committee actually was in the same situation as we are right now, we did not have a quorum, so we held a meeting, uh, with no vote. Um, and hopefully next time, we're gonna have a quorum, because there was one vote that we had to postpone to next time, that we wanted to have. Um, the nice thing was that, uh, things are on track. Uh, on a side note, this Friday, I was able to go in, uh, to East Meadow for the first time with, uh, Jim Pietrus and John Libera. Uh, I think we all walked out impressed, in fact, I think that was the word that, uh, uh, John used, he said, it's impressive. Um, eh, things that they are, they are doing to keep whatever exists in a nice way that goes along with, uh, what they are adding. It was nice, but it's good to see that, you know, everything looks fresh, uh, new for the students that will come over. One area, just to keep everybody, uh, uh, excited and curious as we're getting close to September, one area that we all liked really, is the new library area.
Wait till you see the lights.
Yeah, that they have colorful lights, light fixtures, it's all open, the old gym, those of you who have been in the old gym.
Red on. Yeah.
And there is a old glass, uh, computer area as you enter, uh, the space, and there's a nice, uh.
Circulation desk.
Circulation desk for, for the, uh, library, I'm sure everybody's gonna, uh, get great use of that space, so that's, that's what I have.
I, I just had two more quick questions, I'm sorry, about the budget thing, so you mentioned, uh, forty-one thousand going to the capital, um, for the upgrades. How, how close to that being, uh, moved on and as far as like installing the stuff and doing upgrades?
So, just for clarification, the request is for forty-one thousand, um, and we need to have the request for forty-one thousand, but it's E-rate reimbursable at sixty percent. So, um, it's not the full expenditure, so I don't think finance committee, when we talked about it with finance committee, there was, uh, I didn't explain that well enough. Um, but we have to have, we have to have the full amount to move forward, uh, before we can apply. So, um, uh, it's like any committee, um, we will go and, uh, we will have our quotes, and we will have our reason, and we will speak, you know, on behalf of the school department, um, to the capital, um, but it's, you know, it, it really is a decision of the capital committee, um, whether or not they would support that request.
Yeah.
So, so the reason I was asking, cause if and when we, you, you know, get the money and they start to, to, to install that stuff, I think it would, you know, once again, be great to spread the news on that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That with the new roof, it, it, it shows the world we're spending money on the high school, right?
Yeah. Right. Right, right.
Yeah. I mean, s- y- were you at the meeting with the, uh, finance committee?
No.
Okay, so some of the things that we already, we already heard or started discussing them, we basically hold ourselves back because we're gonna start the conversation on the fourteenth. Some of them are related to possibilities of providing certain services and programs virtually and this and that, so this will be a great investment to be able to do that. And if we did not, um, make it clear enough, and sometimes there are so many things happening that it might not have been as clear as, uh, it, it, it could have been.
Yeah.
Um, yes, we're asking for the forty-one thousand plus, um, but a good chunk of that is potential reimbursement based on the E-rate program that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna receive back. In fact, I'm assuming that it was understood, because the question was, when it comes back, uh, wh- whether it would go to the town or the, uh, school, which we did not, uh, know the answer.
Right. Right. Yeah. I think the reason why I wonder how it's registering for folks is, you know, the comment that this is still gotta come out of some, it's still money that's gonna come out of.
Yes.
A stabilization account.
Yep.
Um, and that's true, um, but it's an investment, and so I, um, so to have people understand that up to sixty percent of that could be, um, reimbursable, um, but none of it is if we can't put forward the request.
Right, so first we have to do it, then get the money back.
First we have to.
And, you know, as always, um, credit to, to Dave.
Mm-hmm.
For continuously having those conversations with, uh, the vendor side, and then the consultant side, consultant being those folks who are,
Yes. Yes.
Um, consulting us on the E-rate, uh, program, and making sure that everything is lining up and then we're set up, uh, to be able to receive. That's why we could not go to the capital improvement committee, uh, with the current estimate that we have, because the configuration changed slightly to impro- to include more wifi, uh, access, uh, points. Uh, because of that, we needed a new bid, and that's coming, uh, as Cheryl said, by mid, um, June or so.
And so the work of the consultant now is to be looking at the original bid and what the new request is, and make sure that, um, what we're purchasing is, uh, compliant with E-rate reimbursement, and so that's their work.
Yeah.
Um, and the first part of that is to have our, we were working with two companies, an E-rate consultant, but also our network infrastructure consultant, um, Acuity to come in and actually price out the hardware, the actual lines and servers and wireless access points, um, that are not devices, they're not end-unit devices, um, that these are, this is actual infrastructure in the building to support our work and to support us being able to Skype with other classrooms and other districts or develop, um, online, uh, capacity, uh, to deliver coursework here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Which on a aside, Ms. Brownell, Ms. Brownell is going to rework this and create a whole space in this library that is dedicated to technology. Uh, so we just are starting that conversation.
Yeah.
Because so much of the nonfiction, students are accessing through, um, digital media, that the hard texts, the traditional texts are basically just taking up space. So we're really gonna take a hard look at this space, um, and so wireless access points are part of the, um, consulting. So my update, um Saturday, June second, we celebrated fifty-eight graduates of Granby Junior Senior High School. We are very proud of these wonderful students, their kindness, their sense of service for the community, their compassion for their fellow students, and their town will be missed. There is no denying the impact these students had and will continue to have um in their next endeavors. On Sunday, June tenth, we will march in the two hundred and fiftieth town anniversary celebration parade. I'm hoping I can get a ride, um I'm I'm trying to line the truck through Mr. Randall and the police department.
Hey, we can buy the truck, the anti.
So between the two of them, I think I'd be able to get a ride, so it should be all set.
Fire truck.
If you know how to play a banjo, George might put you on his.
I know, I can play guitar, but I can't do a banjo, I could fake it. Um and we will be walking under a flag that was designed by one of our very own students, uh Brandy Dumas.
Dumas.
Dumas. Um designed uh and was the uh winner of our contest uh for the flag. So these flags are being um sewn as we speak. Um they will fly uh throughout the town, um and then one of them will fly at the state house. And so we're working on making that happen um as a field trip for uh hopefully some of our students.
Right.
So congratulations, and I would like to um to invite Brandy and her family here um in the future, so that we can
Please do, yeah.
uh s- once the flags are here. Um so um that is my update, so a lot of good things happening. Um and looking forward to um the end of the school year and wrapping things up for students and um it's been a good one.
Cool, thank you. I guess we don't have anything, I'm not even sure how, we're in a meeting that doesn't have a motion to adjourn. So uh we have nothing, we don't have a quorum, so we'll just uh adjourn and call it, thank you.
Thank you.